Okay, I now call the May 20th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We have veteran Scott Castle with us today from the Marine Corps who is going to lead us in the pledge, and we are joined by our parthronate, Allison Blue, who will lead us in meditation and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day you've given to us. Thank you for another day you've given us on this earth to serve you. I pray that you would give wisdom to those who are making decisions, our commissioners, our state representatives, our governor, our president and his team, as they find the best way to deal with all the issues surrounding the pandemic, Lord. And I know that there are people who are hurting. I pray that you would give them extra measure of your grace and peace, Lord, and for those who are serving overseas, that you would protect them and comfort their families who are back home. Just give us a great rest of the day. I pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
We have two proclamations for today. The first one is around Children's Mental Health Awareness Month, and Commissioner Hoke is going to read that. I mean, Commissioner Smith, apologize.
I've been calling. Children's Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation, May 2020. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future and eliminating the stigma associated with mental illness, and whereas by working together with families and communities, we can provide comprehensive mental health support and service for children and youth with mental health needs, and whereas is appropriate that a week be set apart for directing our attention toward our children's mental health and well-being, and whereas York County System of Care, along with other agencies and organizations across the state, is applying unique approaches to serving children and adolescents in order to care for mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our communities. Through early intervention, care, and awareness, our children can improve their lives and grow up in a stigma-free world. Now, therefore, we, the York County Board of Commissioners, in recognition the importance of ongoing fighting its mental health, do hereby proclaim May 2020 to be Children's Mental Health Awareness Month in York County and urge all citizens to recognize the critical importance of recognizing symptoms and seek professional care that will allow our children to lead productive and happy lives, given this day in York, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on the 20th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2020.
And we have Michelle Havas with us today, who is the Director of our Human Services Department.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much for that proclamation. I just wanted to also take this opportunity to highlight some of the activities that we have planned for our Mental Health Awareness Week, which will begin on Friday. As you may recall, I was speaking some time ago about our activities, and we had originally planned to have a walk and a game at the Revolution Stadium where we were going to highlight a number of activities and our providers. As we all know, neither of those activities have panned out to be very good in the world that we're living in, at least for today. So we've had to pivot a little bit, so I just want to talk with you a little bit about what we are doing. We are doing a lot of online messaging this year. And so, as you know, we did start off with a number of PSAs that we have been running through the month of April, May, and June, a lot of them targeting wellness, especially in light of the COVID crisis. We are also going to be having two Zoom trainings that we're highlighting for next week that are going to be talking about the stressors of working from home and other professional stressors through this COVID crisis, and also helping educate people on different coping strategies. So we will be getting that messaging out with regards to anybody that's interested in participating. The public's welcome to participate in that. We will also be highlighting some other videos that we will have out that will include parents talking, some of our youth, and some of our school guidance counselors in terms of how we can better support some of our students who have had a very challenging year this year with schools being canceled in their traditional sense, and a lot of loss for a lot of students who haven't been able to participate in the same activities that they had thought that they were going to. And so finally, I just want to leave. We also, as a division, put the word out for any of our employees. We've been trying to educate them and remind them about mental wellness. Mental wellness is something that's important for everybody, especially during this time. And so the last challenge we put out to them was send us a picture of what you do to keep mentally well. And so I just would like to end by sharing the video that we put together with regards to our employees and how we're, how many of them are coping, so.
And where can the public find that information?
We will be posting that all on our website that we are going to have out for Mental Health Awareness Week.
Okay, great. There were some great words of wisdom there and some great suggestions. And to Megan, good luck with that half marathon. That is a lofty goal. So the other proclamation we have today is for National Public Works Week, which is May 17 through May 23rd. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of York County. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in York County to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canada Public Works Association. Therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, do hereby designate the week, May 17 through 23rd, 2020, as National Public Works Weeks. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make in protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, given this day in York, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on the 20th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2020, signed by the Board of Commissioners and Mark Dur. Public works is big job. So thank you for those watching out there and listening who serve in the public works arena. We certainly appreciate all your work. Moving on to item number five.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through I, as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Make a motion to approve the agreements between the York County Treasurer's Office and the listed municipality and school district to fulfill the duties of tax collector for the collection of municipal and school real estate taxes effective May 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021, and there Paradise Township and the Spring Grove Area School District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I know Barb's not here, but I-
Meredith is here.
Meredith, okay. I assume that the tax collector resigned or is not available?
Yes, the tax collector has resigned, and we've been asked by the municipality.
Thank you. So the question, Commissioner Hoke had a question around why. So Meredith, who's our deputy treasurer, is going to answer that question.
Yes, the tax collector did resign for Paradise Township, and the municipality, as well as the school district, have asked us to be the collector for their areas until the next municipal election.
And this is standard operating procedure, and a lot of several other municipalities have asked us to do the same thing.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Meredith. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to appoint the following individual as deputy tax collector to fill the duties of the indicated municipal tax collector as may be necessary, effective May 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021, and it Bridget James, tax accountant two, and she works in the treasurer's office.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the district attorney to the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Washington, DC, for a total grant amount of $58,008 for the reimbursement of supplies purchased in response to the COVID-19 pandemic for the period of January 20th, 2020 to December 30th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and we are joined today by our esteemed colleague, Kyle King. He's going to share a few comments regarding the grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, and I briefly spoke with President Commissioner Wheeler just before the meeting. First, an apology. I submitted this, I believe, three weeks ago, and we needed to have this grant submitted. So the grant was submitted prior to today's approval, so for that I do apologize. But I do come with good news. Shortly before coming over here, I spoke with United States Attorney Dave Freed, who let District Attorney Sunday and myself know that we have been awarded that $58,000. And so I would like to thank April Billups Barclay, who is here and who chairs the C Jab along with Judge Musty Cook, for allowing us to seek this opportunity. So thank you to them. And I'd also like to thank Warden Dahl and Mark Dur, who I worked with along in this process. So again, I know I mentioned this, I think, last time I was here. The $58,000 is certainly a drop in the bucket to what this county has had to spend in COVID-related supplies, but I believe every little bit does help. And so certainly, once we are physically in receipt of those funds, I will make sure that I work with Mark to make sure that that gets in the appropriate place. If I have any other questions.
So the funds are actually being given back for different departments throughout the county?
It allowed for-
Just for your department?
No, it allowed for one funding source, and so therefore, our office, again, along with a number of others, worked together to submit that. Our office, just to put things in perspective, has probably spent close to the $58,000, but I know as a county, and that's why we just, we applied on behalf of the county. And like I had previously told Mark, you know, our take on it was, it doesn't matter where the money goes. It's all coming out of the same place. That's county taxpayer dollars. And so where it gets credit, to me, is not the important thing. It's just the fact that we're getting that money to help offset the money already spent, so.
But I guess I ask, Mark, are there funding resources available through grants that we're going after? Because obviously, we have a lot more expenses than this.
Yes, there's a number of different sources that we'll be applying for.
Good.
Kyle, thanks on, thank you for taking the initiative on this and working through to get that done. It's a big, it's a big help. Every little bit's going to help moving forward. Appreciate that. Absolutely. Everybody working together, this is what we should be doing, moving through these times, is working together to get things accomplished. So thank you, and thank your office for that.
You're welcome, Commissioner. And as I said, though, it was a team effort, so, you know, again, to all those folks, but thank you.
Yeah, I just, I do want to echo Kyle's comments regarding April. She is very diligent about looking for grants and trying to uncover grants and get money for our county. So that is no small feat, and it's no small feat to write a grant. That's not an easy thing to do. So I just want to publicly echo what Kyle said, so thank you.
Good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
I make a motion to ratify submission of a joint application between the York County Department of Human Services, Office of Mental Health and Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities, and the Department of Probation Services in the amount of $781,999 to the U.S. Department of Justice, Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Grant Program to fund a joint coresponder project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I see April and Sharon here. Could you maybe talk about this grant and what it's doing? Or Amy?
Amy.
I'm not sure who's here to represent.
Hi, good morning. Hi, I am Amy Evans with Community Action for Recovery and Diversion, and one of the roles of that initiative is to coordinate joint efforts across the different areas of connection between justice and health agencies. So that's why we have a motion today between two agencies, and I'm up here speaking about it. I don't think it's any secret nationally, and that locally, York is no different, that a lot of times people in behavioral health distress first encounter a law enforcement officer, well before they ever encounter a behavioral health treatment provider. And one of the evidence-based models that a lot of communities use to make those encounters more productive for the individual and for the police officer involved is to use a coresponder, who is a mental health caseworker, who in this project will be embedded in a local police department. So they will be an MHIDD employee, but they will, we've had four local departments indicate interest that they want to take part in this. So they will have a caseworker in their office and will be able to corespond to calls, actually go out to the scene with the officer and de-escalate. They will be able to follow up with those individuals and conduct screenings and connect them to services, which is something that law enforcement officers often wish they had the time to do, but almost never actually have the time to do. And they'll also act as a primary support for the county's crisis intervention team program. So that is the gist of the grant application. I'm happy to answer questions.
Amy, are you at liberty to divulge who those four departments are?
Yeah, they have issued letters of support that have gone in with the grant application. It is York City, Hanover Borough, Spring Garden, and York Area Regional.
Thank you. Is this a competitive grant?
It is a competitive grant process, yes.
Okay. And is there a time limit on the expenditures if we get the grant? It's like $781,000.
That is over three years. One would come on board right away, and then the second and third years, the additional coresponders would come online.
Good.
And for those watching that don't know, Jan Harold and Judge Rubilcock were big leaders in pushing this card program forward. So we thank them for their, for their efforts, because that's, they've certainly helped bring us to where we are today, so.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm number 10.
I make a motion to approve a release of funds in the amount of $79,285.04 to the Farm and Natural Lands Trust of York County for acquisition of a conservation easement of 144 plus or minus acres in Mannheim Township owned by John and Annie Esch.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We thank Sean Kenny and his organization for bringing this forward. I know he's not here today because of the public not coming into the building, but we thank him for their hard work.
Great. Any further discussion? Mark?
Can I say, this is, this is one of the types of projects that we're capable of doing through the additional assessment this year for farm land preservation.
Good.
Great thing. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11.
Make a motion to ratify the approval of the fiscal year 2019-2020 Act 148 invoice covering July 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2020, on behalf of the York County Office of Children, Youth, and Families, to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, Office of Children, Youth, and Families, in the amount of $39,966,877.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know we're sent this report from the fiscal officer on children and youth, and she does a great job, and we appreciate her hard work.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm number 12.
I make a motion to approve a second amendment to the MOU between the County of York and the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau to reallocate the funding for the remainder of the 2019-2020 fiscal year as a result of the decrease in tax revenue from the hotel tax. The second amendment to the MOU has been reviewed by the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I can make some comments, but I might ask Michelle first. You've reviewed this contract, and maybe you want to give us a little background?
And for those of you that don't know what a MOU is, that stands for Memorandum of Understanding.
Right.
So the MOU that was approved by the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board takes the hotel tax money and divides it among some legacy partners, along with grant funds and administrative fees, to be able to give grants to York County businesses. Based upon the reduction in the hotel tax, there's less money, obviously, to go around for this fiscal year. So the board got together, ran a bunch of numbers, and was able to figure out how they could continue to support the community, continue to do the administration functions, continue to support the legacy partners involved with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and hopefully, that funding will then increase once we sort of get back to normal. But they're taking some proactive measures to enable them to continue to do the work they're doing.
And I'll just make some comments. I've been, full disclosure, I've been on the CVB Board, the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, for about 16 years now. I was on before I became a commissioner, and I served for the prior board. And as everybody knows, when we increased the hotel tax by three to 5% a year or two ago, we put together an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the CVB, by the county commissioners, to distribute the additional funding that came in from the hotel tax revenue. And that was going to the Tourism Bureau, the Fairgrounds, and the Grant Committee that was handing out money for different grants, and there were some legacy partners. And as Michelle said, we all know that hotel revenue tax is way down. It is obviously, you know, not where it used to be. People aren't in hotels. Some of our hotels have actually shut down until we get back on our feet. So the reduced income came in, and there is not a lot of grant activity now because there's a lot of activities going on in the community with the, with the regulations in place by the state and federal government. So the commissioners met with the CVB and talked about this, and they wanted to redirect some of the funds to the Tourism Bureau to continue to operate since hotel revenue is really down, to give some additional funding to the Fairgrounds, which is our Convention and Visitors Center where we have all our activities, and continue funding the legacy partners, which are the partners that promote tourism here in York County. So I think this is a good thing. It is only through the end of fiscal year for the CVB, which is June 30th, 2020, and then when we negotiate a contract based on the percentages. So I think this is a good thing to keep tourism industry running until we get through this pandemic.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number 13.
I make a motion to approve the Tax Refund Register, 2020-08, authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $23,905.47.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a number 14.
I make a motion to approve the check register for the week of May 13th, 2020, totaling
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know this is a little high, and Mark and I discussed this. We had a, an ARC payment that we did for this fiscal year, which was $7.2 million, which made it $10 million.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a number 16. There were no executive sessions between our last meeting and this meeting.
I think we missed 15.
Missed 15.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
My slash got ahead of myself. So I go back, item number 15.
I make a motion to approve the check register for the week of May 20th, 2020, totaling
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And this is also high, and we had an OPED fund payment of about $4 million, and a tax claim distribution of about $2 million. So that's what made it $11 million.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I already reported on 16, so we'll skip down to 17. Any other business? Just to remind the public, the last day to request a mail-in ballot is May 16th. That's coming fast and furiously.
26.
Why? I'm flipping numbers today. Day 26. Also, we mentioned at the last Elections Board meeting that some polls have been consolidated and some polls have been moved. So please check the county website for updates. We are doing our best to communicate out to voters that that impacts, but as you can imagine, in managing the COVID crisis, as well as this election, there's a lot of activity going on, so please- going on, so please be patient with the Elections Office. They really are doing the best they can. We have received requests for close to 50,000 mail-in ballots, so we'd also like to share with the public that while we will make every effort we can to post results on Election Day, we do not believe we are going to get through physically all of those ballots by the end of Election Day. Certainly, for those that vote at a poll, those election results, we will be able to share, but we want to make sure we are diligent in opening ballots and processing those. So, just would like to share with the public that it might be at least a day or so afterwards just because of the sheer volume of mail-in ballots that we have to tabulate. Did I miss anything?
Just to piggyback on what you said, for the public to know, we're getting these 50,000 ballots supposedly being mailed back in, which are the votes by the people. We are not allowed to open those ballots until 7:00 on Election Day. So, there's a lot of ballots that have already been received. They're down in our office. We can't open them. So, it's, you're going to realize that on Election Day, there's going to be a lot of people having to be in here, and we have volunteers and people from, you know, the county helping to open and scan them and count them, but it's, it's going to be a physical feat to get them counted.
For those of you in the past who have liked to hand-deliver your ballot to the Elections Office, certainly, we are still closed to the public, but there is a secure ballot box in the lobby of the County Administration Building at 28 East Market Street, and it's under 24-hour surveillance, and there's a sheriff's deputy that sits by the ballot box. So, for those who like to do that, you can still come in the front door and drop your ballot off. So, again, May 26th is the deadline to request a mail-in ballot, and please check the York County website for changes that may occur at polling locations. And certainly, you can call the Voters' Office at 717-771-9604 for any questions that you may have. And I do see that the Economic Alliance is here today. Did you want to share any updates from the Economic Alliance?
Good morning, all. Just wanted to share a couple of updates. As we all saw last Friday, the governor moved York County into the yellow phase of reopening, and everything that that means, and all those parameters. So, just wanting to share that, in addition to the ongoing efforts of the PreparedYork.com website that we've shared throughout the past couple of meetings here with you all, we have now added, the York County Economic Alliance has now added a new section and webpage called Reopening York County. So, anyone in the public businesses can access that website at www.PreparedYork.com/reopen, and that will take them to a page with all information, with all of the information listed for businesses, community at large, on what does, what will happen come May 22nd, 12:01 a.m., as York County enters the yellow phase of reopening. There are particular guidelines and toolkits accessible in Spanish and English for businesses that interact with in-person operations that will be needed to display all of the parameters that the administration and CDC guidelines have been shared with them. So, again, really want to encourage our local businesses, all of our businesses and community at large, to go to PreparedYork.com/reopen to navigate the resources listed there. There's also great information for anyone looking to access PPE supplies from a local basis. There are great manufacturers listed there, marketing agencies, a lot of great sources for, to access those supplies, as well as for employers as they're preparing to reopen and are in need of a labor force. They can access and upload all of their job opportunities there. Anyone that is looking for employment through COVID and post-COVID can also access the information listed there for, and how to connect for a job. So, really can encourage everyone enough to go on that website that will continuously be updated as more information for industry specifics are issued out, so please visit that website when you can. It is accessible in Spanish, English, and a plethora of other languages. There is a translate feature added on that website as well. Another initiative that we've come and shared updates on is regarding the Economic Action Plan, and that's been a collaborative effort with the Planning Commission, the City of York, the Business Improvement District, and the YCEA to develop a 10-year comprehensive economic plan, economic development plan for the county. Right now, what we would like to share with the community, there is a live survey in Spanish and English. Please tell us, take that survey. The website is YorkCountyEAP.org, and we can share that information out through the channels. But on there is a survey in Spanish and English that we would encourage everyone and anyone to please take and take a couple of minutes of their day. There are a couple of questions, but we just want to make sure to capture as much input and feedback from the community and its stakeholders as this development plan is being, being developed, so. And then, just lastly, on the ongoing virtual events and webinars, tomorrow at 1:00, we will be partnering with the Gladfelter Institute for Public Policy at York College to share a study that was commissioned pre-COVID on opportunity zones, as that was a pipeline for, as that was referenced as a pipeline for economic development pre-COVID. This study will just share information on the 300 opportunity zone designations across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, how communities have been implementing them or communicating them out to stakeholders, and ultimately, right now, in a post-COVID recovery, what do those communities and what do those opportunity zones actually provide? So, that webinar will be offered tomorrow at 1:00. It is, the information for that is on our Facebook page, on PreparedYork.com, and that will be hosted by ourselves and the York College, Pennsylvania Center for Public Policy, so. And the Virtual Career Fair that has been taking place every Friday, we are taking a little bit of a pause this coming Friday, but we will be back on Friday, May 29th, at 12:00, to share information on jobs available in York County in Spanish and English with a great slate of employers, so, thank you.
How many opportunity zones? Is it six in York County?
In York County, yes. We have six designated tracks.
I just get some questions, and I'm not sure my fellow commissioners may be, a lot of the general public, and myself included, are not exactly sure, going from red to yellow, what businesses are affected. And I guess this is their way to summarize it, that most of the businesses that cannot open for inside or restaurants and bars and some of the personal care facilities, because I've had people call me and say, oh, is Kohl's going to be open, or is this place going to be open? And I guess, can you summarize, or is that on your list as far as what stores are open or not?
Specifically to what stores will be open? I don't believe so, but I would encourage anyone to check the webpage. This information is available by industry-specific, so anyone in, any restaurateur can go and see what information is available from the statewide association for restaurants. You know, we have information there for restaurants and retail. Some retail will be opening. We know we've heard anecdotally, Community Aid, Life Path thrift stores are going to open again through our Downtown Inc. affiliation, and the businesses and the merchants, there's a great slate of businesses that are going to reopen that have been operating very remotely or virtually, but will be back in operations coming this Friday. So, really just encouraging everyone to look to their local communities, check social media, and follow that information. But again, we'll be updating the information on the PreparedYork.com/reopen.
Okay. Regards to nursing and personal care homes, I think most folks are aware that congregate settings are at high risk for COVID-19. So, for nursing and personal care homes, even though we're moving to yellow, those, those facilities will continue to operate as if they are in the red zone. That will change once we move to the green phase. But York County has done a fantastic job of mitigating COVID-19 in those types of facilities. So, big kudos to the employees who work in those facilities, because they're doing a great job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, all.
Anyone else out there today? Okay, so, we'll open it up for any public comment that's come in via Facebook, and seeing as we have none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned for the Commissioners' Meeting. We will now move on to the Salary Board.
I make a motion to approve the position, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements set forth in the York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments with no additional benefits or concessions as otherwise noted, as stated in the Internal Salary Board detail: Department 17 Information Services, Department 23 Conservation District, Department 31 Juvenile Probation, Department 32 Adult Probation, Department 61 Court Administration, Department 66 RDJ Office Staff, Department 70 Emergency 911, and Department 39 Penn State Extension.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Salary Board is adjourned, and we will now call to order the York County Retirement Board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on April 15th, 2020, as submitted.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Make a motion to include the following vested individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Karen R. Bogus, Panrak, Mary H. Stevenson, Panrak, and Gail L. Thoman, Panrak. And for your benefit, these were people that left when the nursing home closed. They had five years of service, but they weren't 60 years of age, so they weren't allowed